Seven o'clock on January seventh, two thousand eighteen, seven PM at City Hall. Whatever, it says eighteen. Twenty nineteen, welcome everybody. Additions to the agenda.
I would request a five-minute executive session to discuss personnel.
I also would. Five minutes for personnel.
Not done. Resolution twenty nineteen oh one. And appropriation ordinance twelve thirty-one eighteen two. Sending out nine thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. No. It was, it was the bill for trash service after we got done. We didn't get billing done in time, so we had to do an extra eight and get them paid because they usually get paid at the beginning of the month. It just took us a little bit longer to get it done.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Or opposed? Any citizens comments? Okay, moving on. Consent agenda approved minutes, regular council meeting, December eighteenth, twenty eighteen. Appropriation ordinance twelve thirty-one eighteen and the amount of seventy-one thousand, twenty dollars, twenty-nine cents in petty cash, four hundred fifty-six dollars, fifty-four cents. But also the appropriation ordinance twelve thirty-one eighteen two and the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. Have a motion?
Some move. Second.
Motion and a second. Brian and Kristen. Yeah.
The one that she had?
Oh, no, not the.
Not the resolution, just the appropriation.
Okay, alright.
All in favor? All opposed? Carrie, agree with me?
Resolution to do new business, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Department Head Committee reports, Lisa Cornwell. Anything from Lisa?
Um, I think she sent you all a text message about the teeth studying these into the stain or something. That's all I know. As much as you know.
Anything for Lisa? Moving on, Police Chief Jim Cudick.
Just a couple things real quick. I don't know if you guys want to hear this. I've been working on it for a couple of weeks now. Basically, just a one to three-year plan for the St. John's Police Department. Just an idea that I've come up with, I've talked to Bill upon a couple of them. If you want me to go over each of my hand or if you'd like to run and just read it and ask the questions. Uh, like I said, it was just kind of a idea that I've come up with and figured now would be time to start it and it's subject to change, obviously. Other issue is our charger's back in the shop over the weekend. Blew a hose of some sort. We didn't know if it was a radiator hose, heater hose. We got that confirmed today, it was a heater hose. About a hundred ninety-five dollars to repair it because of this, the, the non-disruptible hose with the connectors. I've asked the shop to go ahead and replace both the heater hoses, the ones failed, the other one's bound to fail and since they got it in there. So we're looking at about four hundred dollars of labor and parts to get it all done. Hopefully, it'll be back in service tomorrow afternoon. And other than this year, that's really all I've got so far.
Counsel, let you review this and talk to Jim about it next meeting if you have any concerns or questions.
I've already done that and I can get that out and pack it over here. I had nothing changed at all.
Sure.
Thank you, Jim. Anything for Jim? Fire chief is not here. Anything for the fire chief? Moving on to Jim, oh, I mean Jamie.
Um, I talked to Carolyn today about like payments, getting started for the grocery store. I believe that we had agreed to make quarterly payments. And so I'm a little confused because she had made the comment like she wanted, because I said, oh, we'll make it quarterly like March, whatever, whatever, whatever. She said now for October, November, December of last year. I'm like, well, we made that fifty thousand dollar payment. I'll see what council wants to do. So, I don't know how she's thinking of it, but I assumed that the payment was for the entire year of two thousand and eighteen and then we would start in the.
All-to-disruption forty-two.
The quarterly payment. So I just wanted to confirm with you that you guys want me to pay the twelve thousand five hundred dollars every quarter, starting.
I'm not sure if that's ever, I was awarded.
At the quarterly?
That's, that's what I was thinking.
But I mean, I guess it.
Because I mean technically, we don't have to pay it until the end of the year. We just wanted to make it easier on us to not see the full amount pulled out. So, if I was you, I'd just check into the wording of our contract and if it's made at the end of the year, then that's just stick to the quarter plan that we agreed on here.
The quarterly payments.
That way I'm.
For sure, she ever agreed to quarterly.
She's never said that before. It was an annual payment the whole time. If we didn't have the fifty thousand at the end of the year, then we would just pay whatever was in that, the one percent accumulated from the year.
Yep. Which makes sense because last year we did pay it in one one percent. We just said one.
We just wanted to make sure we got one in two thousand and eighteen.
Right.
Yeah.
I guess there was an issue though. Technically, it wasn't supposed to be paid.
Okay, I can look into it more and tell her. I don't know.
I guess not to me. I guess it doesn't really matter to me.
Well, they're, they're about to have to start their loan payment, so I think she's trying to figure out where they're going to get their money to pay their loan payments. Because I'm also having to look into, so I have to get a report from the state that shows what each business.
Generating.
Is generating for the one percent and then I have to cut a check. I have to cut a check every month to economic development for the one percent sales tax that's being generated at the grocery store because that goes back into the Tifft Street. So, we were just kind of talking about all of that, but I'll, I'll look into the payment. I mean, she had just mentioned quarterly payments and I.
And, yeah, I'm not saying it makes a bit of difference to me. I mean, if that's what we have to do, it's going to be the same no matter what. Yeah, go ahead.
My opinion, that's EcoDevo's problem, where they make their loan payments, not the city's problems. We did agree to make quarterly payments, but we didn't agree to make quarterly payments.
Yeah, I'll look into it. I, honestly, she called and I didn't have time. I don't know if she realized I had a meeting tonight because, um, so.
I mean, I don't have an objection to making a quarterly, but it's really not our problem, that's for.
Right.
Yeah. I'd kind of like to say.
It doesn't matter.
I just think though, if I remember correctly, the agreement.
Quarterly is going to be not such a big chunk taken out at once, but it's still going to be that, I mean, does it really matter in the long run?
Yeah, it's probably not, so.
Well, probably a loss, but would you not like to see what kind of revenues are generated before you make payments?
And it may be better for the city to see those revenues so that you're paying based on revenues. You're going to have higher tax question around the end of the year or the beginning of the year because of Christmas holiday.
Consensus to yearly? Is that what we're saying here?
What you means quarterly?
Right. No.
So that we know what we have.
Right.
Because if you go pay twelve thousand five hundred this, this quarter, you go to pay another twelve thousand five hundred and the revenues aren't there, then you've already paid out.
We've already made a commitment though. We've already committed to at least fifty thousand or up to fifty thousand, so if we don't.
There's no, there's no legal behind that. We don't have to pay.
She's saying she wants all of two thousand and nineteen now, correct?
No, she was saying that, that we are going to make quarterly payments.
She was trying to figure out what the pay schedule was.
Yeah.
She wanted to know when they were getting, when EcoDevo was getting the payments.
Right. But she, I said the fifty thousand dollars that we just paid was for eighteen and she was trying to say something about all the way back to seventeen to eighteen, but you couldn't technically, I don't know.
We talked about that when she was here and we.
We got the eighteen.
Right. But she was, yeah, so.
To me, it's not going to make a difference to us if we pay quarterly or annually.
Right.
It's going to be the same, so that works better for them. That's not what we agreed to, but is it going to make a difference? No.
Right.
What if the revenues not generated?
It, it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Because we're in an agreement period.
Yes, it does.
If we go out.
Yes, it does matter. If we don't make, whatever, it is an agreement to pay fifty thousand dollars on what is collected. So whatever we collect, we are obligated for that fiscal year to give to them.
Forty thousand dollars is collected, that's all we have to pay because that's all that was collected.
Right, right.
So, yeah, if quarterly would work, then quarterly would be fine because we wouldn't shoot ourselves that way.
I'll just keep in contact with her and get it figured out.
Yeah, there's a tax collection are on schedule, it doesn't not.
Yeah.
The tax collection.
Yeah, they do. In fact, they're a lot better than what I thought.
I think they are too.
About the same as what they used to be. It was like eleven thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars a month.
Last month, I think we got sixteen thousand.
Oh, really? I didn't see that. But yeah, I'm still surprised at that because that's higher than what it used to be.
Yeah, it was December, December twenty-eighth that would have came in. I think it was for, for December, whatever month that, I think they're two months behind because I think.
Right.
And that's what I was trying to tell her because I have to go in and get those reports, but my numbers aren't reflecting that we're actually getting revenue from the grocery store yet. So, I think it's two months behind, but I'm, I have an email in to, to double check all of that, but I'll get it taken care of. The other issue I want to bring up to your attention, um, is it Helen? Helen G.'s house had a power surge and they are requesting, um, that the city's insurance take care of some of the things that were damaged. I've been in contact with Carol, her daughter, since she has passed. Um, I gave her the liability insurance claim report. So I just wanted you guys to be aware that that's happening. Our insurance guy said that, I mean, it's not, it's an unfortunate thing, but he said that it, I mean, the city didn't go out there and, and do something to make it happen. It was just kind of a unfortunate, unfortunate.
It was a damage on the triplex between the transformer and the house. We don't know whether it was a previous tree rub. Trees were not even close to the wire at the time of the.
Well, Carol had said that there had been trees there for a while.
Or what it was, but regardless, the phases shorted together. She got two forty going into some hundred and twenty volt stuff, garage door open or some other stuff. We don't know exactly what, but I told Jamie, I said, I think probably the best way would be to get a hold of the insurance agent. Have them see, you know, whether it was something that the city would, would pay on or whether it would be classified as an act of God where we did not force the damage.
Right.
It just happened.
Right.
So that's kind of where we're at.
I'd certainly like to hear what they have to say about it first.
Yeah, well, I, I turned it, or I think she came in and got the sheet. I printed it out and put it up there for her to come get, so I just wanted you guys to be aware that that might be going forward.
You guys found some sort of spot.
They found a spot, yeah. They got called out after dark one night. I, she, she claimed she smelled smoke and so the fire department went out and then interned. I didn't know about it until the next morning, but the guy that was on call went out and that's what they found was a damage on the triplex. To me, it would be no different than a limb falling on that service, you know, and it shortened it. But I told her, I said, it probably better take it to the insurance, let the insurance decide.
Jeff, where, where are we responsible for as far as maintaining, you know? You guys take care of up to the water meter and then homeowner does later on, so where?
Same way to the top of the weather head on the meter service.
So that it is on our end?
It would be on our service line coming in, but like I said, you know, it could be, it could have been something, we, we've taken down triplex a lot of times if the squirrels have ate up and chewed on and stuff. So, we really don't know what caused it. I mean, it's not that we can go around inspect every service line. We usually look at them when we trim. We're trimming now, but this tree was a long ways back from the service, so it would have been, if it had been a tree rub, it would have been previous from years back, probably.
No, I agree. I just, I'm just pointing it out because, I mean, if it is on our end, you know, in my opinion, just letting you guys know it is on us.
Well, that's normally covered in your.
But it's on there. It wasn't on there is what I'm saying.
In previous, in previous calls like that, it's been claimed as an act of God because it's not something that we created. So insurance normally wouldn't pay on it. It would go back to the homeowner.
It's just a life is unfair situation.
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's, and like I said, it's nothing we created and we could have twenty services accounted for and they have it shorted, you know? We try to trim ten feet back from the wire every time we trim. Some homeowners will let you. They'll let you trim just enough off to clear the wire, you know? They love their trees more than they love the wire, so it's kind of one of those deals of who knows how it got there.
Yeah.
So.
Subject to your deductible, so if you have a high, high deductible, you assume the risk, so.
It's just one of those.
That's where that normally falls.
I mean, I get it, but we've told other people, sorry, it is what it is, it's just.
You know, we've had some, we've had some claims on different things over the years that, that the insurance normally will, will turn it down, but not to say that they would this time.
Sure.
It would be up, it would be up to the insurance.
I'd like to see what they have to say.
Whatever they decide.
Thank you for listening. Not for now. Anything for Jamie at the moment? Okay, moving on to Jeff.
I have nothing.
Anything for Jeff? Okay, City Attorney.
Well, I had, Jeff, you guys have gotten along over here on Ninth Street. A couple of deals, the, the alley filled in and then one hole. What's the deal with that last hole on Ninth and Nuttys?
Probably Christmas vacation. We haven't got back up there. I would assume that this week we'll take care of it. That's kind of what we're doing. Well, I mean, you know, we got this, we got Christmas, that graces, that stuff. We're just trying to tidy up some stuff, so we'll get to it.
Alright.
It was soft the other day, I know, when they, when they were back up there and it was also zero, so they never touched it. So, if it's, if it's a problem and it's too soft, we'll dig it out like we did the rest of it and we'll fill it back in under Angelon, so anyway.
Oh, I had one more thing. I had a couple of calls, just going into the driveway at the grocery store on Fifth. It's kind of getting a little rough. I just, it'd be nice to kind of keep that up a little bit, in my opinion. It's getting some holes right.
Christmas vacation.
So, that's about it.
I mean, we'll get it, so it's a street like anything else.
No, and it's probably a constant problem to do something else.
Now.
Yeah, and I noticed that, but.
But we'll maintain it as good as we can. Sure, sure, yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be an ongoing problem.
For a while.
It'll be, yeah, it'll be.
Everybody in town's.
Well, when you turn off the dirt onto hard pavement, that's whether it's concrete, that's what you're going to get when you stop, when you turn. I mean, it's, it's going to be a constant deal.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Concrete.
You could fix it for.
There are solutions to that, you know, guys, we discussed that, so.
Yeah, being on the south side or north side of those trees, you know.
That's another problem. It gets no sun this time of year whatsoever. It's either muddy or it's hard as a rock, so, you know, it's got, it's got ten thousand dollars of rock on it, so anyway. I mean, I just, I, I don't think the council wants me to send guys out every day and fill holes on that little driveway. I mean, it's going to have to be done when the street's done.
And I said, it's a constant problem, but I just don't want to see it get really bad.
No, it won't get real bad. No, no, it won't, so.
Have you heard anything on the pickup or have you had it looked at at all?
It goes in Friday, I think. I believe it's Friday the fourth.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, it goes in Friday, so.
Anything else for Jeff? Moving on, City Attorney John Beverley.
The only thing I had, I owe you guys that dog ordinance and everything going on for the last two weeks just kind of slipped in my eyes.
Get everybody patched up and healed up that was sick?
Yeah, well, kind of. My wife's got the flu now.
Why are you here?
I don't have my things going anywhere.
Yeah, where's your wallet, Sammy? Okay, anything for John? This time? Moving on to me. I didn't, really don't have anything other than the Christmas party. It was nice to see those that could be there and I think we had a good time and it was a good response from the employees. I think they really enjoyed it, appreciated it, and I think it was well deserved for them and I wish we could have done more, but that's, that's a real nice tradition. I, I really appreciate everything everybody did for that.
The guys were very appreciative, too.
So, it's very good. Okay, no old business, move on to new business. Resolution twenty nineteen dash oh one.
That is just the gap resolution that we pass every year, talking about the fiscal year, our year ending December thirty-first of nineteen.
Have you finished shopping funds and stuff that you're still working instead?
Well, no, it's not done.
That you're working on.
I have it done for you to approve. I just got it done at five oh one today.
Do I hear a motion?
Some move. Second.
Motion and a second to approve resolution number twenty nineteen dash oh one. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries four oh. End of your transfers.
Do you two want a copy? Okay, so what I have for you is just kind of going over everything so you can see it. And I'm not just saying, hey, this is what we're doing and you guys nod your head, yes. So, the first column goes over the two thousand and eighteen expenditures, the two thousand and eighteen budget authority, and then the difference of those two. So that would be our remaining budget authority amount. We still have, and this just goes over the funds that we actually transfer out of, but, so, the AP estimate column, um, I just kind of tossed out some numbers. I'm not sure what we still have out. I think we still have a Midwest Energy Bill for the Water and Light Fund and then, um, that sixteen thousand for, was it the water well?
Jamie?
Yeah.
Is that six months' worth of expenditures or is that seven?
That's a.
Because you, you used up over half of your budget authority already.
That's two thousand and eighteen.
I know, but your, your budget authority was eleven, one point eight.
One point one.
And you've already used six, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, which is a little bit over half. So, I'm wondering if you, if you've had seven months' worth of expenditures.
That's twelve months of expenditures.
So you only spent half of the money.
Of what's budgeted, yes. It's one point one billion or million.
One, one point one, one point one eight, almost one point two now.
Yeah, we still have, in the general fund, we still have five hundred and fifty thousand, yeah.
But are you, you're ending, are you entering your tax receipts on a calendar year or on the fiscal year when you get paid, that's in December and that?
Our fiscal year is ending at the end of the calendar year, yes.
So you only, we only spent half the money that we were budgeting?
The, the budget, the budget is a tool for you to use and most generally, you budget on the way high side. So even, just because our budget is three point whatever million dollars, it's not necessarily what we have. If you keep going over, I have like the current cash balance and then we'll go into like the unencumbered cash. So that the appropriation estimates are there, the proposed transfers are there, and then the revised budget authority after AP and transfers. That just shows that we have, we have the money that we need. Excuse me. The budget total with the transfers out that we're talking about doing, the current cash balance, and that's, that's the difference there. You know, just because, you notice our, our difference column and then our current cash balance, those numbers do not match up. Just because it's in the budget does not mean that, that we have the cash to spend. So, when we did our nineteen budget, we took out a lot of these transfers just to be on the safe side with the numbers that we were seeing. I, and I think it was from the water meters. I think we're, we're kind of seeing the, the waves from that, but it's, it's ending a lot better than when I was doing the budget. I was, um, I was a little bit worried, but it's, it's actually ending a lot better than we anticipated. So, that one seventy-four, two thirty-seven and all, like all of those numbers are what we had unencumbered at the beginning of January one of two thousand and nineteen. So with these transferred, with these transfers, if they're approved, the anticipated ending, unencumbered cash balance is the far right column. And so that's what we would be carrying over to the top of the two thousand and nineteen budget for unencumbered cash. And that's, the general fund usually sits about five hundred. The water and light, um, so, I mean, really, we're over. The, the storm sewer, let me see here. I, I had to take out five thousand on a storm sewer transfer because of the balances, um, and where we were sitting. And then sewer utility, I took out the transfer to the general fund because like we're sitting okay. I mean, we're sitting seventy-four thousand over what we have, and I've looked at, I've looked at the past couple of years. I mean, this isn't many years back, but I took out the twenty thousand from sewer to general. But then that sewer to sewer utility, the sewer utility fund is, um, a little bit scary and I'm going to, I planned on having all of the, like wage. I know last year you guys liked to look at the wage compensation package. So I still plan on getting that hopefully by next meeting to you and at that point in time, I'm going to go over where everyone is getting paid out of because I believe that one of our employees is getting paid out of that fund and that is depleting that fund pretty, pretty quickly. It's going down, it was like a hundred thousand and then sixty and then four, I, I, there's money going out and nothing coming in, so. There's no reason to pay someone out of that if it's not, not able to. So, I think that is the only other thing I changed. Oh, no, I take that back. The sewer to capital improvement is three thousand and then the sewer to sewer replacement, I up to twenty-five. Because with all of our sewer issues, I feel like we need to start putting some money in there if we're going to be able to do the repairs that we need to do. I think that's it.
Counsel, questions, comments?
Thirty, forty, twenty-nine, one eighty-two, twenty-five, three. Twenty's out. Fifteen to ten. Thirty.
You guys are going to make this real easy, aren't you?
Yeah.
I, it only took me a couple hours for it. That's the best thing about Excel, you put a little, uh.
Just kind of have that formula.
Formula in there. It's just not that fun when you're trying to talk about it with the accountant. Jim, did you double check me?
I can see this calculator going.
The proposed for eighteen at this point.
Why would you change that?
And then I changed here.
Got you. So it's not very well.
One got changed yet.
Yeah, okay.
One got deducted, I took twenty out.
Got you.
I guess I probably could have left sewer to. I guess I probably could've left sewer to capital improvement at the six, but I don't think we even spend much out of the sewer fund. Or the capital improvement fund. And it's called two different things in five different places, so, whatever. Oh, you were telling me. You don't have to approve it today.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I wanna be.
Well, and how about to expedite this? Why don't we hold off on doing anything so we can take a better look at this? Table it for the next meeting?
Yeah, we don't have to do.
Yeah, we don't have.
We don't have to do it today, I don't wanna do it.
Everybody okay with that?
Is that okay, Jamie?
Well, okay. Get your numbers.
Next year, you're gonna be here on New Year's Day and done, right?
Sure ain't not.
That's fine. Okay. Okay, so counsel will review.
Well, and you'll have better numbers, cause we'll hopefully have the bills from Midwest and Rosencrans. Forgot to ask you about that.
Rosencrans is included. The, the better, the better numbers aren't happening. Like, this is the, this is it.
Okay.
There's a heater.
Cause there's a big enough cushion in there, it doesn't matter.
Okay, moving on, no other business, move to executive sessions. Five minutes to discuss personnel matters and elected personnel with the police department to include Mayor, Council, Attorney, Chief. Good?
Yep. So moved.
To reconvene at seven thirty-seven.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries four oh. Meeting will reconvene at seven thirty-seven.